Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council. So glad you could join us. We will start with our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they shared this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the people of Spokane's people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, please call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Lambden.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Just want to make an announcement that some changes happened at our 3:30 agenda setting. The Cedar Street vacation has been deferred till December 1st. We will not be taking any testimony on that. And also, the mayor's emergency ordinance has been deferred until November 10th. We will not be taking any testimony on that. So please schedule yourselves accordingly and did not want you waiting around to the end if that's what you were going to speak on. At this time, we will have public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, first up, we got Larry Andrews.
My name's Larry Andrews, great District One. And, um, both business and my home are in there. OPR 2025-0729, personal service agreement with Carolyn Associates LLC from Denver for code assessment modernization of Title 17 of the Spokane Municipal Code from November 4th to 2025 through December 31st, 2027, not to exceed $425,000 plus tax. Why are we hiring a Colorado contractor for half a million dollars to modernize our Spokane development code? We have our own climbing staff, and the Spokane staff can't do the job? Why are we paying them? Okay? CPR 2025-002, parks and libraries through October 24th, $6,862,752 and some cents with the library claims. Our city is facing a spending problem. There's simply more going out than coming in. As a lifelong resident of Spokane, our parks and libraries have always been a point of pride. In the past few years, I've become worried about what these have come to represent. Children finding fentanyl foil in our parks and in our libraries, hosting communist meetings. If you want me to pay more for these facilities, please make sure that they're places for everyone, not just the few. CPR 2025-003, payroll claims of a previous approved obligation for $10 million. Every week, I see millions of dollars on the so-called consent agenda. And every week, these are approved. I understand that the consent agenda is a rubber stamp. So why do you require public testimony to pass these items? Again, we are paying Colorado consultants when we are over budget. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
But what I'd say is, we're spending huge sums of money here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Uste Komizek. If you're online, please press star six. Okay, moving on, we got Derek Azaro.
Derek Azaro here speaking up for the kids in Spokane for their safety. This is on the mayor's budget. I've been protesting all along that one of your council members, Lambden, has been voting to approve the budget that checks that this mayor writes. You can see in this picture, at the press conference, standing in the back of her is three members of Catholic Charities, One X, and the other ones are the CEO, Jonathan Mullerhand, Dawn Kinder, and also Addiction. This is wrong. To me, it's a conflict of interest. Looked over the budget this week. I think this is the first time I've seen Catholic Charities not getting money for this week. The mayor, she paid herself $200. I mean, she makes $187,000 a year. She's worried about a meager $200 getting paid back. Out of the opiate fund, $2,000 for computers, so I guess that's her contribution to that. So, I mean, I don't know what more to say than Catholic Charities is definitely tied in with one of your members. Catholic Charities is definitely tied into your mayor. And it's like one big happy family, just keeps the fund rolling in that direction. It might become time now to, instead of giving them all the money, they usually end up with about $3 million or so a year left over money. I don't think you have to give them money anymore. You want to start taking this money you're giving them and dividing it up onto your small providers, where you can monitor them better, they give you better data from them, and have a little more control. Because you're up against a mega, a mega group that basically is taking over the city and indirectly taking over your council from the inside out, or excuse me, outside in. So, I mean, it's just, it's ludicrous that a council member, I don't care, I don't care who it is, if you're an employee of a nonprofit and you're voting to approve money given to another nonprofit, that's a conflict of interest, as I see it. So I think going forward, you need to start really taking a close look at the conflict of interest. I know Kinder was okay.
And thank you, Derek, for your time.
Thank you.
Just a point of clarification on that, these are all reimbursable expenses that have been previously approved, so we are just not giving out monies. They have gone through the process to be approved.
Sunshine Wiggins, Spokane. I like that we're giving the parks and libraries all this money, but I just wonder how much of that's going towards like, because we're having the homeless hang out in the libraries. Like, I think we probably wouldn't have to pay that much money if we actually had appropriate places for them. I don't know, like, we're pushing them out into the neighborhoods right now. But, uh, point being is like, I think we could do less money for these guys if we didn't have to have like, the tickets given out to these guys so they have to have that like, program, community court and stuff down there. I don't know, I just think it's too much, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine.
That's it for consent.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions to consent agenda is approved. Ms. Fister.
Special budget ordinances, ordinance C 36773, amending ordinance number C 36626 entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biannual budget for the city of Spokane and amending it to update and modernize Title 17 of the Spokane Municipal Code with a consulting firm and declaring an emergency. Welcome.
Hello. Yep. Larry Andrews, great district, number one, business and home. Ordinance C 36773, appended ordinance number C 36626, entitles part, in ordinance adopting a biannual budget of the city of Spokane and amending it to update the modernization Title 17 of the Spokane Municipal Code with consulting firms and a declaration of emergency. God, we got them all over the place nowadays. This emergency for consulting services to pay a Denver firm nearly a half a million dollars of firm, Clarion Associations, in a presentation by Clarion recently in Colorado listed the following temporary housing strategies. Tiny homes on wheels, tiny homes on foundations, pallet shelters, other prefab shelters, all-weather tents and safe parking where they're going to live out of their homes. Why are we paying a half million dollars to tell us that humanity strategies is people sleeping in their cars? We don't even allow our pets to sleep in these cars. It's ridiculous. Why are you paying these people? I mean, we all know what the answers are, but you don't have to pay them a half million dollars. Next one, ordinance C 36789, to efficiently and quickly pay medical claims. Employee benefits fund needs additional budget. This emergency causes an $8 million payment, whoa, for the city employees' medical insurance claims. Our mayor should have told us time and time again that she has a PhD in economics. Where's the budgeting? The mayor told us to trust her with the city's budget and finances. Why are we in a position to pay an additional $8 million in an emergency fund? How can we trust this mayor with our city budget when she is $8 million off in an employee medical insurance? I remind the council that Mayor Lisa Brown, who has funded half a billion dollars in known and likely improper payments when she was Director of Washington State Commerce, and I'm not saying this, the Washington State Auditor said this. This, this is unexcusable, okay? And you guys, you already decided this a couple hours ago. We're up here just saying these things, what we feel, but you've already made your decisions, and it's sickening, actually, to have you do this to us. I mean, $8 million off? Man, no wonder why we're under the water. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. I think that's all public comment on this. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 7-0. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C 36789, amending ordinance number C 36626 entitled in part, in ordinance adopting a biannual budget for the city of Spokane and amending it due to increased medical claims experience and declaring an emergency.
There is no additional public comment. Any council commentary on this? Thank you. Prepare to vote. Prepare to vote. Thank you. I think it's passed 7-0.
Ordinance C 36, um, excuse me, emergency ordinance C 36774 relating to city council employees amending sections 2.005.010, 0.30, and 1.100 of the Spokane Municipal Code and repealing sections 2.005.050 through 0.090 of the Spokane Municipal Code and declaring an emergency.
There is no public comment on this. Any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I'll just say, I'm, uh, I'm not ready to vote on this. I've got still a lot of questions that are broad but relate to this item that have yet to be answered, and I don't feel that I can take a thoughtful vote at this point in time. And so, I'm either going to vote no, or if there'd be support for a deferral for one more week, I would offer that and see if that might be amenable to the council.
Any council commentary?
I'm pretty sure there is public comment.
Okay, thank you. We just got there. We have two public comments. We're going to have Mr. Huelings come down, and then we're going to have Larry come down. Welcome, Will.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown Spokane. So, first off, I want to speak out loud and clear against ordinance C 36774, uh, ordinance being pushed by Wilkerson and Dillon. According to Betsy and Paul, the council supposedly needs independent employees who only answer to them. They claim the current system is too specific and too cumbersome. Oh, please. What that really means is they want total control. Their solution is to hand council president full authority to hire and fire employees after merely consulting with other council members. And we've already seen what happens when this kind of unchecked power is handed out. Remember when Brianne Beggs was council president? He brought in Christopher Wright, a disbarred attorney, as a policy advisor, paying him over $107,000 a year, probably more now. And let's not forget, he just happened to be married to a council member, Miss Councilwoman Stratton. I mean, seriously, a disbarred attorney making top dollar while the city cries poor? What an absolute joke. That's where you should start cutting off money. I understand it's, you got a fancy term, but seriously, that's what happens when they allow people like yourself to do hiring and stuff. But my time's running out, and you got my email, so hopefully you read it. And thank you.
Thank you, Will.
All right, Larry, you're up.
Larry Andrews, Andrews have a business and live in the great district, number one. I, uh, this is ordinance C 36774 relating to city employees. I respect the work of our city council employees. However, the city staff has exploded in size over the past decade, okay? I mean, I wish my staff could increase like the way you guys have, but you got all our money to do that with, so it happens. You just keep adding more. City council staff once had one secretary per council member. Now the city council has eight additional staff. These staff duplicate employees of the major. The problem here is, we don't have the money for the staff. And I, I mean, we have some great staff here. I ain't, I'm not questioning that. But we've got to cut back. It's, it's a decision that has to be made. And, because we don't have the funding when we have 30% unemployment of vacancies downtown because we have the vagrants running all over. And during the day, it kind of disappears, but I went around last night and took a look at what happens. Well, it all comes back at night. All the viadocks are just trashed unbelievably, and they're back there camping again. And so, I think we spent probably $50,000 in removing trash under the two viadocks down where I go to business all the time, and it's right back where it was. I mean, I think this is the sixth time that we've tried to clean it out, and they're back there camping again. So, soon as the lights go out, the people come out and play. And it's not a good play. It's, it's drugs, fentanyl, and everything else that can happen under the sun. And, and that's not what our city's about. Our city's about having places for the kids to play, even at night, okay? I mean, it's, it's dark here at 4:30 right now. And, uh, we've, we've got to make this place safe. And the only way we're going to do that is bring these people into treatment, figure out what they need, get them the treatment they need. If they, if they don't want to get treated and they want to continue with the drugs, then they got to go to jail, I'm sorry. But how many of you would dump your trash in a viadock? You, you just wouldn't do that. You wouldn't even think of that. You know, when I grew up, it was, if you see it, pick it up, right? Isn't that what it was? If you see it on the street, pick it up. Don't put it there, right? That's what we need to get back into. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary? Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. Just with Councilmember Cathcart's suggestion, definitely would be open recommending a one-week deferral. If there's questions that need to be answered about this ordinance in the interim, I think that that would give us some time to address just about some of the authority of making those modifications, firing and hiring, so we can get that addressed.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Councilmember Zepone?
Second.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was more clarity on like, what Councilmember Cathcart was looking for.
I mean, we can have this discussion in public if we'd like. Happy to do it, but I don't know that we want to.
Well, I, I, we can talk later. I just wasn't sure what it was, but we can talk later.
Yeah.
So, there's a motion, a second. I just want to say, this proposal just is updating the language to provide council the flexibility needed to address both hiring and separated employment for our central staff. And our central staff is seven people, not the 21 that everybody keeps putting out there. It's not the process we have with other employees throughout the city, and no one wants to have their position discussed here on the dais. It does provide a different level, additional level of confidentiality in the HR process. But I certainly am in support of a one-week deferral. There's a motion and a second for a one-week deferral. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred for one week. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-0104 is deferred to November 10, 2025 agenda. Resolution 2025-0105 requesting the restoration of federal funding for low-income food programs.
Uh, good, uh, good evening. My name is Will, and I live downtown. But tonight, I want to talk about something I've been speaking about for years. So...
So, this is in reference to the resolution about low-income food programs?
Oh, okay. Sorry, I was getting it mixed up with the one before that. So, I'm here tonight to strongly oppose Resolution 2025-0105. This resolution calls for restoring federal funding for low-income food programs and urges Congress to end the government shutdown. Let's be honest, this is nothing more than political theater. It's a clear feel-good resolution that won't fix anything. The shutdown isn't happening because of Republicans or President Trump. It's happening because of Democrats in Washington DC, and they are playing political games and using food assistance as leverage. So, living downtown, every day, I have people approaching me wanting to sell me their food stamps. And guess what they do with that money they get from selling their food stamps? They go buy fentanyl. They buy fentanyl, and then they sit across the street from where I live at, and they smoke it on the sidewalk. But I will give it to SPD. They're doing a good job. But that's a big problem with the food stamps, and that's part of the reasons why they're, President Trump, they're looking into food stamps, all the fraud. I mean, it's just, it's disgusting. That is meant to help people, you know? Not to supply their drug habits or anything else. I live in the Ridpath, and guess what? There's people that allow people to come and stay in their room for food stamps. And that's what's happening. It's being abused. And our government wasn't, the government shouldn't be paying for, they weren't meant to feed the people. I mean, this is crazy, you Democrats, how you guys are just overreacting. I mean, it's crazy, but that's it.
Thank you, Will.
Derek Azaro, speaking up for the kids in Spokane and their safety. I guess I can't comment on Bingle's proposed amendment. I can't comment on that, that you shot down. Clarification?
Their proposal was amended at 3:30 today.
Okay, well, I don't agree with you doing that. Anyway, I'm actually going to agree with, agree with you on something. I do think we should take care of the people for food stamps. I'll tell you why. I was a single dad after my divorce. I lost everything I had, and at some point, I had to use this program. And it was the only way I can get through. So, I can, I've walked those, in those shoes, and I'm speaking from lived experience. That was something I had for my son and I. And if I didn't have that, my situation for him and I would have been dire. I agree with Will, there are some people that are taking advantage of it. My ex used to do the same thing, sell that for meth, when she got on it. So, I'm going to actually agree with this one, with Klitsky and Dillon and Lambden, based on the fact that I've had that lived experience of actually being on... on the fact that I've had that lived experience of actually being on food stamps, and I know how important that is. I don't, like I said, we can't comment on the one I came down here for, the 104, where you tied the two together. That's definitely off the chart. That shouldn't be any part of any of that. This is about giving money to the people who need it, need to eat. I'd like to remind everybody, too, all the nonprofits, all this argument goes on about funding and who's not getting funding, whatever. Nonprofits, by their filing with the taxes, they pay no federal taxes, for the most part. But they're crying about, you're crying about not getting federal money. The nonprofits, as big as they are in this community and other communities, you have to realize that they don't pay any, any taxes to the federal government. So it's just, it's coming out of the homeowners, the business owners, the families that rent, all of us. But the nonprofits do not contribute to our federal government and our country as a whole, the way I see it. So to complain how the, this particular president or any other president is not giving you money from the federal government, let's just look at the real reality is, if you got rid of the 3,800 nonprofits in Spokane bringing in $4 billion, employing 28,000 people, then you have a problem. It's all falling on the backs of the homeowners and the renters, because through their rent, they're paying tax, property taxes, too. In my case, I had to sell my house, even though I didn't want to, because my property taxes through your policy and this mayor was pricing me out of my home, between that and the insurance cost. So I have, you know, a direct effect on, on my life. Thank you.
William Hagie, if you're online, can you press star six to unmute? All right, Larry.
My name's Larry Andrews. I live in District One, have a business in the great District One. I, I don't mind giving people a helping hand, okay? But I think what I've seen and others have seen that's worked in the community here, there's a lot of fraud that's going on, and that's not giving the help to the people that really need it. Okay? I would support when they have to, to get food, that they have their ID with them. Okay? And you have the food coupon or whatever you're getting with ID. So we know that that person is getting a meal. And I don't think any one of us would not want someone to go hungry. And, and, and that's the truth. And, and I, but, but making it, improving upon it so they actually getting the meal is the important thing, and that the kids are actually getting the meal, that they're not selling the coupon and the kids are going hungry. That's very important, and we need to improve upon how they get their money or however. Just giving them a credit card doesn't do it anymore, because you've got to have a way to prove that that person is getting the money. Okay? And I think we really need to think about being more self-efficient with our own community. Okay? Because every dollar that goes out from the government, it takes $4 to make that $1 work. Okay? And as our business, we heard the call, my wife and I went to Costco, and we bought a whole basket of everything we could. And we took it to a community center, and we will continue doing that until the call is done. Okay? And I think we need to reach out to the businesses in this area and ask for help. And I think the businesses in this area will give the help that we need. But we've got to ask them. But they want to know that the help that they're given is going to go to the person in need. And I think you want the same thing here. I believe every one of you would want to make sure that that person or that kid has a good meal. And, and, but we've got to hold them accountable. And if we don't hold them accountable, shame on us, because we're giving to their addiction, and that's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Sorry, I said the wrong thing. William, if you're online, can you push star three, and I'll unmute you? All right, go ahead, William.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, perfect. So this is on agenda, item two zero two five dash zero one zero four. Lisa Brown declaring a state of emergency in relation to SNAP benefits.
William, we are not speaking on that. That has been deferred. We are now taking public testimony on the resolution about restoring funding for food and low-income programs.
The, oh, yeah, so this has been deferred to November 10th? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, it has. Thank you.
Okay, James Gant.
I'm James Gant, resident of Spokane. I live in the North Indian Trail area of District Three. First of all, I would like to thank you, Council President, for convening this meeting and for all of you being here and not vacationing in Cancun or taking time off until January. You're here doing your job. Thank you. This shutdown, I called it the Republican shutdown of our government that controls the House, the Senate, the executive branch, and the Supreme Court. I appreciated what Councilperson Bingel said earlier today about, we got an executive out of control, doing anything they want, and a legislative branch that has abdicated its responsibility. You've not abdicated your responsibility. You're here. You're trying to work out these problems, and I appreciate that. There are 108,000 people on food stamps in Spokane County. Most of them, your constituents, children, disabled vets, the elderly, and some homeless who have the wherewithal to figure out how to get a food card, are now looking at a card. They can't go in the convenience store, buy the canned, unhealthy food that's overpriced, the meals they have. They can't buy anything hot. They're left with nothing. So I appreciate you taking this up. I appreciate what you, what most, every one of you said earlier, and what all of you, I believe, agree to, that we need to do something about taking care of the most vulnerable in our community. While Congress is derelict, you're not. Derelict comes from the word, is rooted in the word relic. Communities would leave their village and leave their sacred relics behind. Don't leave the sacred children, the sacred disabled vets, the sacred, vulnerable elderly without anything. This administration has done that, and the inept, impotent Democrats can do nothing about it. But you can. Thank you for being here. Thank you for acting on this. Please pass it.
Thank you.
That completes the public testimony. Any counsel commentary? Councilmember Lambden, then Councilmember Klitsky.
Yeah, thanks, Council President, and thank you, everyone, for your comments this evening. I completely agree that there is definitely room for opportunity for improvement in a lot of government programs. I do think there was some good ideas that were thrown out here tonight as well, so I appreciate that. I will also say that I agree with what most folks shared. I don't believe that hunger and food insecurity should ever be weaponized in political games, because these are our neighbors and community members who are being impacted by some of these decisions. So with that, I am really happy to sponsor this resolution this evening. I, I will say that it, it feels like a small thing that we can do for our community and is something that we've seen across the state and other states. Other cities are coming together to do similar things to support their community. I do want to thank Andreas, my legislative assistant, for doing a lot of the work in tracking the ongoing changes over the last couple of weeks related to the government shutdown. I'm sure as many of you following the news, you're recognizing that it's been a bit of a whirlwind, and there's been just ongoing tracking of what has or has not been happening. So again, this is really just a small piece for us as the city of Spokane to really reach out and do what we can for our community in this very uncertain time. Not only are, as was just mentioned, a lot of our children in our community and veterans, disabled individuals, and also working adults and families impacted by the frozen funding for these programs, but we also are starting to hear from local grocery stores, some of the impacts that they're going to see when folks are not redeeming these benefits at the stores. So the overall economic impact is also something that's really concerning to me. And again, while this feels like a very small piece that we can do and impact as a city, we're really calling on our federal legislators to reach across the aisle and work together to make some real impact and changes for our community in Spokane. I do also want to thank all of our nonprofits and community members who are stepping up right now and checking in on their neighbors. We have the holidays coming up, and it's going to be some difficult times for a lot of folks in our community. So just remember to be kind to each other, and again, happy to support this this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitsky, and then Councilmember Dillon.
Thank you. I've served our country two different forms of national service. I was in the Army, and I also did AmeriCorps. When I was in the Army, I had a little bit of extra rank, and I lived on post, so I did not qualify for SNAP benefits. But many of the folks below me that I outranked or who lived off post did qualify for SNAP benefits. This is a lifeline for working Americans doing hard jobs in our community. I was on SNAP benefits when I was AmeriCorps. I did my AmeriCorps training, working with the ESD, like 120 or something. When they gave me my training, my AmeriCorps was based in Idaho, even though I was working here in Spokane on Spokane River toxic issues. They told us, they highly encouraged us to go on SNAP benefits, and I was like, oh, I'm not going to need to do that. I can figure out my budget. I had a really great apartment in Browns Edition. I was paying like $3.50 a month for rent. But I think I lasted two months, and then I went in and got my SNAP benefits. For the first time in my life, I was on public assistance. And so since I have some experience with using SNAP benefits, I can say they, they give you a little card. It's not like coupons that you can trade and sell. And most of this is going to folks that are children or taking care of children, veterans, disabled veterans, people with disabilities in general, lots and lots of children that are being, using these SNAP benefits, folks you wouldn't expect, folks that have full-time jobs, folks that are doing great things in their community, folks that are out there volunteering. And it would be pretty difficult, I would think, to sell your SNAP benefits. You'd have to give your card to somebody and then trust them to give it back to you to sell your benefits. I don't think most people would take that risk. Most people do eat. So I think instead of worrying about the very few people who would abuse this program, we really need to be concerned about those soldiers, those veterans, those children, and those working-class folks just trying to have food on their table. So I do also want to thank all of the businesses, nonprofits, and individuals who are working hard to get more donations to Second Harvest and other entities that provide food for our community. We've already had those organizations be struggling before the government shutdown, so it's critically important right now that we take matters into our own, own hands as best we can. This resolution is the best we can do to try to encourage the federal government to do better, but we also need to get out there and help people if we're able.
Councilmember Dillon, then Councilmember Bingel.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Lambden, for sponsoring this. Food should never be out of reach. I remember vividly in the recession, 2010s, how a lot of these same food assistance programs were on the chopping block, including the state WIC funding, and just how little the cost was on the return of investment in really supporting healthy families, supporting people that are, are struggling. And it was really heartbreaking to see how food could be used as access to food, as a political bargaining chip. So I do appreciate the, resolution really does objectively tell Congress, hey, we've got to come to the table, got to work this out, and really work together. I've been very heartened, I think as many others have, from seeing a lot of the mutual aid efforts, different businesses stepping up. I was catching up with former Councilmember Kinnear last week, and we were at the Scoop and Hidden Bagel, and the owner came around and said, you know, we're going to be offering free meals to $3 meals. You can pay it forward, and we're going to be launching this on Thursday nights. And we're seeing throughout the community, a lot of businesses step up in a way, in ways that I can't really remember. And I think it does send a clear message that in Spokane, we have each other's backs. And so that's been really amazing to see, and I think that this resolution is really born out of that, to reaffirm that message, and I hope that that is heard loud and clear.
Councilman Bingel, and Councilman McCackhart.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good resolution, and again, it's good to remind our, our leaders that again, it's, you know, we, we need to do our job and make sure that we're taking care of our people, and so I appreciated the resolution coming forward. I will share one story on, on fraud here that I was directly affected by, so I'll actually share two stories. So when I was a kid, there was four of us. My mom was a stay-at-home mom. My dad had just started our church, you know, didn't, you know, salary was very, very little. He was also going to school to become a psychologist so he could better help the folks who were in the church. And, you know, we were, we were on public assistance, and thank God for it, because we, we wouldn't have made it without it. And so I'm the beneficiary, beneficiary of public assistance, and I'm very grateful for it. Also, what you guys don't know is there's a box elder bug on the back of my head here, but it's been flying around all day. It was there, it was on my head. Sorry, sidetracked. But I, I will say, there was also a time where I was on the, getting gas one time, and I, I walked into the gas station, and I was getting a couple of Red Bulls, and I had somebody walk up to me and say, hey, I'll buy those Red Bulls for you if you buy me some Scratchers. And so I think that's how it happens when you're talking about fraud. I mean, it, it, it happens, but the, you know, the majority of folks who are on SNAP are, are folks who need benefits, and I'm happy to support this resolution. I'm glad it's coming forward, because I want to make sure that, that nobody goes without food. And again, I'm, I'm really grateful for the assistance my family received when I was young, and I hope that we make sure everybody has food.
Councilman McCackhart?
Yeah, I also just want to thank Councilmember Lambden for bringing this forward, and, and the council for agreeing to a very modest amendment earlier today. I think obviously this is, this program and programs, very similar to it, are a lifeline, as has been said. It's a safety net that is there for a reason, and it's important to keep that in place. I, I would just remind folks, though, that if there's individuals who really want to, on their own accord, help, obviously, as mentioned earlier, donating to community centers, but also right here at City Hall, we're having a food drive. We've been, it's going to run from October 15 to December 15. So come on down to a council meeting, bring food with you. We can collect that. You don't have to come to a council meeting, but I think it'd be helpful to have more folks attend. But it's, it's a really good opportunity for folks who do want to give back a little bit and have some ability to do so. But, but I'll be supporting this, because it, it is an important piece and an important, I think, message to some of the folks that are above us.
Thank you all, and I'll just end with, thank you, Councilmember Lambden. Our community has been struggling with food insecurity for a long time. Our community has been struggling with food insecurity for a long time. It's come from our nurses, all of our colleges and universities have food pantries, wherever you go. And we're in the greatest country in the world, and we struggle with food insecurity. That's almost like shame on us as Americans. This is a great program, and you really can't judge who has food stamps or who uses that. I will say, because I am the senior person up here, there was a time food stamps looked like Monopoly money, and you could exchange it back in the day. And it was embarrassing to be in the grocery line and pull out your actual food stamps. So I am glad that they have upgraded that to a card, so we don't have to feel different or be other because we are getting assistance from food. And again, I will say, thank you, Larry, for your testimony about what you and your wife did. I challenge every citizen that's able to go out there and purchase food and donate it to your church or your community center or to City Hall or wherever, because really, the responsibility is on all of us. Again, government can't do everything, but we as citizens can absolutely do our part. Prepare to vote.
Council President?
Yes.
Sorry. Sorry, I was distracted by my Mike Pence moment, as Jacoby just said. But I really did want to hit home on what you and Paul just said there is, I have also been very encouraged by the community stepping up in a difficult time and really finding ways to give back where they can. Again, I think that is what makes a strong community. And so again, as Council President said, Larry, I think what you did is great. I think more people are doing that. I've been really encouraged by the restaurants specifically, who are finding ways to give away free meals. I love the idea of the pay it for, right? Pay a few extra bucks at your mealtime and somebody gets a free meal. I think all of that is fantastic. I hope that goes on beyond today, and we find ways as a community to take care of, you know, the low, the poor, the hungry. And I'm excited to see where that actually goes from here, so.
Thank you. Prepare to vote. Thank you. That passes 7-0. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C 35945 vacating the north half of Rosewood Avenue between the east line of Helena Street and 25 feet east of the west line of Lot 17, Block 27 of the plat of Guns Edition to Spokane in Section 28, T26N, R4 to 3E. WM Spokane, Washington, from owners having an interest in real estate, abutting the above right of way.
We do have Eldon Brown here. Eldon, did you have anything else you wanted to contribute to this or the position? And then we'll go to Larry Andrews.
This was a vacation.
Would you introduce yourself and your title, Eldon? Everybody, we know you, but everybody else doesn't.
Eldon Brown. I'm an engineer in planning and development for the city.
Thank you.
I do kind of manage the street vacation process. This vacation, we actually approved back in 2020. We had the first reading and the hearing. And basically, what took it so long to finalize is the applicant actually needed to do closure work on Rosewood up there just east of Helena to complete the vacation. They just, this year, stepped forward and did the project they needed to do the closure work for. So that's what took it so long. So we're just here for the final reading. They've completed the closure work and we're ready for finalization of the vacation.
Thank you, Eldon.
Thanks.
Great District One, business and residence here in the city of Spokane. The thing that bothers me the most is the five years that it took to do this. I mean, that seems extreme to me. And I think we need to figure out a way to make this happen quicker for people, because you could be dead by the time this thing got done, okay? I mean, five years, that's a long time. And we, I know there was other stuff that needed to be done, but I think our city needs to figure out a way to make this stuff happen faster somehow, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. You need to put a comment? Seeing none, prepare to vote. Thank you, that's 7-0. Ms. Fister, before you read, I'm going to take personal privilege. We have a staff member here. If it'd be okay, I'd like to jump to H3, the final reading of the ordinance adopting the Hilliard Subarea Plan.
H3, final reading, ordinance C 36784, adopting the Hilliard Subarea Plan, the Coordinated Framework and Community Vision for Guiding Future Growth, Economic Development, and Investment in the Hilliard Area, and Amending the City of Spokane Comprehensive Plan.
This is a time and place set for the public hearing on the following matter, the Hilliard Subarea Plan, ordinance 36784. Hearing is now called to order, and we will have a staff report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening. Tim Thompson, Operations Manager, for the record. While this is, we're getting this dialed in. The Hilliard Subarea Plan is really going to function as a redevelopment-focused framework guiding public and private investment in northeast Spokane. It'll serve as a blueprint identifying catalyst sites, infrastructure priorities, and public-private partnerships to modernize industrial areas, strengthen business districts, and reinvest in those surrounding neighborhoods. And this plan outlines strategies to upgrade that infrastructure, expand housing options, and improve mobility in open space to support reinvestment and long-term community stability. Now, I think you've all seen versions of this before. So again, the key objectives of the plan were to create distinctive places, enhance livability, achieve economic vitality, improve services, and identify those implementation strategies. The first step was an urban framework plan to really look at the entire area. In doing so, we determined that the Hilliard neighborhood was really six distinctly different planned areas, and so we called those out in the plans. They all have different needs. The next thing was to create the, or to look at catalyst sites, which are those sites that are either undeveloped or underdeveloped, that could incentivize or be the, to encourage development, sites that are developable, more developable. Again, Hilliard Business District was one of, the residential to the west, the legacy industrial in the yard, the East Wellesley Business District. So here, we saw an opportunity to really look at that Wellesley corridor and create more of a center-type designation with mixed use, encourage some of those service industrial-type uses that would help to serve the industrial users during the daytime in the week, and then the surrounding adjacent residential in the evening and weekends. The Esmeralda area, which is currently being developed, and then the Beacon Hill area. We all know that we've got several, probably several thousand units, I guess, now up there, or to be planned up there. Planning initiatives, pinpoint near and long-term actions related to land use, transportation, urban design for each of those areas. When I came before you before, the intent was to have the council just acknowledge the plan, and as we move forward to, through the periodic update process, would be to use this plan to inform that and make any recommended land use changes. However, after a lot of discussion, thought with some stakeholders, we determined that this was an opportunity for us to come forward, adopt this plan by ordinance, and with this ordinance, actually change the land use on, within several areas. So on the screen, that Wellesley corridor, here, let me change this one. So this is what it'll look like. So that Wellesley corridor becomes a center and corridor. The area around that water tank becomes open space, and then on the top of Beacon Hill becomes a mini-center to really take advantage of some additional land uses up there and take advantage of that existing event facility there. It's important to look at those market and economic conditions, looking at how much industrial, commercial, and residential development this area could absorb over a period of We looked at housing, and this may be subject to change. Again, as we look forward to the comprehensive plan update and we look at our preferred alternative, we may see a need or an opportunity to actually increase densities within this particular area. The graphic is really talking about displacement. This builds upon the displacement discussion that was had in the South Logan TOD Plan. Transportation mobility, again, looking at improved connectivity, walkability, safety, looking at the bicycle trail network, support growth, and really have a balanced system. And I'd miss transit. So there, STA is looking at additional transit service, particularly on the east side of the highway. Utilities, we want to be able to support the redevelopment, so is their capacity. We want to make sure that we do strategic infrastructure investments that will help with that private sector investment. Let's see, as we looked at the utilities, we actually found they're in relatively good shape. I guess out of sight, out of mind when they're in the ground, but, you know, really, I think one of the more visible deficiencies is really the road networks within the yard area and that industrial area. And then we just want to be future-ready. So are we, are we ready for EV? Are we ready for broadband? Opportunities to enhance the existing parks and open space. So as I mentioned, looking at changing the land use around the water tank to open space would allow for some trailhead opportunities up there to take advantage of the mountain biking in the region. And then, of course, when you're talking about planning, you have to look at costs and how you're going to fund it. As I've said before, you can have the best plan, but unless you have money typically to implement it, it's going to sit on your desk. So we looked very closely at costs and funding, and we really wanted to look at what the existing funding sources were and what other potential opportunities existed within state law and within the city's code. So the primary, really the primary funding source in this instance is the tax increment financing that's around the Northeast Public Development Authority, the NEPDA. And then you look at other funding sources to look how best you can fill the gap, depending on which project you're looking at. There's local improvement districts, public utility district, the local infrastructure financing tool, and then possible grants, opportunities that will help to fill those gaps. So hopefully, we have plan adoption tonight, but the work doesn't stop. I mentioned, we're going to, we'll be looking at our comprehensive plan update, community partnerships, continued collaboration with the NEPDA businesses, residents, really looking at those catalyst sites and trying to focus development and incentivize redevelopment, and then how we can phase infrastructure improvements, generally speaking, to really, again, create that private sector investment. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions? Well, hang on, we have one public testimony, then we'll get to questions from staff. Okay, we'll comment, go ahead, Councilmember McCattar, then, if you've got a comment. Okay. Larry, are you commenting on this?
Larry Andrews commenting on Great District One here, that we want to make it as great as the South Hill. And if you look at the problems that we have in our district, District One, compared to the people on the South Hill, they don't, they don't have the homeless moving into them like what we do. They're all over the place up there, and we accept them, okay? But why, why are they moving into District One? That should be one of the major questions. Why are they coming into District One? And it's by the hundreds, actually, because I kind of take count in my district, and I feel bad for them. So what can we do in the Hilliard district to improve upon that? That's what we need. We need to look at the roads, one thing, because you've got that new development up there, but you come down the hill and you've got a hairpin turn that I don't know what you're going to do in the wintertime when all those people try to come down. And then we've got another hairpin turn that we come back the other way. And to me, we needed to get some infrastructure in there for these people, because we're going to stack thousands of people up here, but then we're going to put them in a road that's going to be terror, okay? And that's realistic. But that's kind of the things that's happened to the people in Hilliard. The people in Hilliard seem to get the hammy downs, okay? And that's what seems to happen here in Hilliard. And that's not the way it should be. I mean, we're all part of this city, and we should get equal representation on the funds for our district as other districts. And I don't think that's happened. And we are an older district. I mean, we were here when the trains were here. We were here that brought all the community here and the hard-working people that are here. And they need to have some reward for what they did for this city, but it was never really given to them because they're more of the hard-working, lower-paid people. And that's not, that's not the way it should be, okay? So we need to get some funding to make this area and help the people in this area a lot more than what we have, because it is a great district, there's great people here, but we also need the funding in our district to bring out to where we were. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in a second to close the hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstentions? The hearing is now closed. Council commentary or questions? Councilmember McCattar?
Yeah, I just, to Tim and everybody who really had a hand in putting this together, thank you. I mean, I think there's a lot of really, really good stuff that's included in this. Obviously, it'll be a little more fleshed out with the comp plan as that comes together, but I'm really grateful that we were able to pivot back to an adoption of an ordinance rather than accepting a report, because I think there has been such incredible high level of buy-in from individuals in the area there that it's important that we're showing that we are moving forward with these proposed changes. And I know Jesse Bank, who is our exec director at the PDA, Northeast PDA, has done, been involved quite a bit, has done a lot of really good advocacy in terms of what has ultimately appeared in this final draft. But just a couple of quick things. Obviously, I think what sort of is the underlying benefit or infrastructure piece of all this is Wellesley. And we are going to have, for folks who don't know, a completely rebuilt Wellesley. It's going to be beautiful and amazing, and that stems from an earmark, thanks to Congress. In fact, it was Congresswoman Kathy McMorris Rogers who helped to push that through two years ago. It's taken some time to get that to a point where it will get developed, but next year, unless something happens, that will occur. And along with that, or maybe shortly thereafter, there will be realignment of Valley Springs Road. That is part of the Beacon Hill development plan. And so there, the timetable is, I don't think is exact, or at least I'm not aware of exactly what that timetable looks like now. There's been some debate a little bit on that and what that looks like, but that will eventually happen. In fact, as a requisite in the renewal of their plat, I remember Councilwoman Kinnear successfully added a requirement for some transit infrastructure at the top of Beacon, so that perhaps there could be some place for a bus that could pick up people or turn around or whatever might need to happen, and that would be a requirement. So that, I'm sure, will move forward as that gets built out going up, up top on the hillside there. But with STA as well, I mean, we desperately need service east of the North-South freeway, and that's a huge area where we are missing the mark in terms of service to northeast Spokane, to District One residents, and to folks who probably need that access more so than a lot of others. And so that's something that, you know, I continue to advocate for on the STA board, and hopefully, we will, we will get to a point that that will, will occur. But I think that this really does represent the beginnings of, you know, not the hammy downs, but the next level of this is what Hilliard, this is what northeast Spokane deserves. Is really, a lot of this has to do with what the PDA was really intended to be about as it finally kind of culminated in an agreement between the city and the county in 2019. And I think there's just been so much positivity that has come in that area and that this, I think, will lead to, that really excites me. And so I'm certainly supportive tonight, and I really look forward to what may be on the horizon for that whole area. on the horizon for that whole area.
Any other council commentary? In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 36784.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve Ordinance 36784. All those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Oh. It could be a roll call vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fister, we can go back to our scheduled agenda.
First reading ordinances. Ordinance C 36768 relating to emergency management, amending the title of Chapter 2.04 and Sections 2.04, .070, .080, .090, adopting new Sections 2.04, .085, .095, .096, .097, and .098, and repealing Chapter 6.02 and Section 18.11.040 of the Spokane municipal code.
Thank you. There's no public comment on that. We can continue on.
H2A.
Yes, because H1 was deferred.
Continuing, continued hearing on possible revenue sources for the 2026 budget. H2B, final reading, Ordinance C 36772, updating the annual city of Spokane property tax levy for 2026. H2C, beginning hearing on 2026 midbiennium modification budget.
So this is a time and place set for the hearing on the following matters, which was continued from October 27th. Possible revenue sources. So we'll call, we will now call a hearing to order. Are there any staff reports? There are no staff reports. Any public comment?
Larry wanted to talk about the first reading.
Larry, can we complete this? I'm right in the middle of it, and I'll, I'll get back to you. Thank you. My assistant has to be quicker than I am. So there's no public comment on this. I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to close the hearing. Is there any council commentary on H2?
Council President?
Yes.
I'll just very briefly speak to the motion. I'm a little frustrated that we have to, to close this without more information. I think there's some other details that should have and easily could, could be shared with regards to revenues, and so I'm a little frustrated by that, but clearly, there's no reports to give and no one here to testify, so we will move forward.
Larry would like to testify on this, sorry.
On the motion, on this?
On the hearing, yeah.
All right, Larry, sorry, come on down, sir.
Larry Andrews, great District One resident and business owner here to testify. Revenue, we need to generate more revenue, and how are we going to do that, okay? We need to make our city more open to everybody from the outside to get the tourists to come in. But when we have all this homeless laying around and all the dirt and the junk and everything laying all around, that really puts a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths that come here, okay? And if you go down in Texas and you go to some of the cities, they're like spotless down there, and they don't have the problem like what we have. And, and we need to start looking at that, because that's revenue that comes in from the outside and helps our businesses and the people here, so we can curb homelessness and other things. But we got to clean up our own kitchen here, and it needs to happen very quickly, because we're bleeding really bad with the amount of money that we're having to spend. And until that happens, we're going to have these deficits, and we're not going to have this revenue coming in that we desperately need. And this needs to happen really soon, because the dire straits is coming up. I mean, if you ever look down at a snowball coming at you, ours is getting so big that we're probably not going to be able to run out from underneath it. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, the hearing has been closed. Was there any other council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
I think you needed a vote on your closing your hearing.
I thought we had a, we had voted to close the hearing.
You had a motion as second.
Motion as second. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any noes? Abstentions? The hearing is now closed. We've had council commentary. Any other council commentary? All those in favor of closing the hearing, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Do I need a roll call?
Is this closing the hearing?
The hearing has been closed. Now we're taking, we're voting on closing the hearing.
Voting on the ordinance.
In voting on the ordinance. Is there a motion? I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the ordinance.
Second.
Moved in second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Here, I'll, I'll move.
Council Dylan moved, and Council Lamb in second. All those in favor of the ordinance, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
Abstentions? That was five to two. Thank you. The next is the final reading in action on Ordinance 36772, updating the 2026 tax levy. Requesting a motion to approve the ordinance. Is there any hearing?
My understanding is that was the last motion.
Isn't that what we just voted on?
I thought beginning the buy-in.
I think we're on C now.
36772, so.
Yes, okay, I'm sorry. And now we're on?
H2C.
Go ahead, Ms. Fister, and I'll open the hearing.
H2C, beginning hearing on 2026 midbiennium modification budget.
This is a time and place set for the public hearing on the midbiennium budget modification. Are there any staff reports? Seeing none, is there any public comment? We have public comment?
I thought we were talking about C 36772, which I had down there relating to property tax.
And you did, we were.
No, I didn't speak on that one. I, I spoke on the prof, uh, revenue. The H2A above, this is H2B below.
Yeah, point of order, Council President. I, he's correct. We, he came up and testified on the, the hearing regarding revenue sources, but the ordinance, I think, would have been separate.
Is that all right?
That, Larry, that's all right.
Thank you. Larry Andrews, great District One business and residence here. I'm really greatly concerned about tax property. Not me, you can tax me a little more if you want, but a lot of people in District One struggling just to, just for their people, to feed their homes, okay? And it's so many that it's, it's really hard, really, really hard for these people, even if they got the SNAP benefits. And, and these are families that have kids, and a lot of them have three or four kids or more, and they can't pay additional taxes right now. And I, and I also emphasize the downtown district about increasing taxes when they have 30% unoccupied down there. Some of us can pay more taxes, but in our district, our people do not have the money for more taxes. We're going to put people out on the street if we do that. So I'm asking, and asking strongly here, that people in District One, and there's a few other districts here, that we start setting a, some type of limit for these areas, depressed, depressed areas. And I, I don't like to say that about District One, but there are other areas in town, and we need to, we need to call these districts out and, and, and help these people out. They desperately need it, and, and, and the businesses downtown, same with them. I mean, maybe you look at an occupation tax instead of the property tax. Maybe if it's only 100% filled, we, you'd tax them 100%, but if they're only 70% full, then you drop that property tax back 70%. And I know we're hurting for money, but these people are also hurting to get clients in their buildings, and it's caused by the city's policies has relected to what's happened downtown. And you have to take the responsibility for what you've, policies that you've put in first on these building owners, okay? You need to give them a break, because your policies have caused this. And please, the low-income parts of this city, do not raise the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote.
I mean, we already voted.
Yes. Are we good?
I thought we were good. I think you already voted on the ordinance.
We're, we're good. Let's, let's keep cooking then.
I think we're on H2C, beginning hearing on 2026 midbiennium modification budget.
That is correct. So again, this is the time and the place set for the hearing on the midbiennium budget modification. Now called to order, are there any staff reports? Seeing none, any public testimony?
Larry Andrews.
I'll pass.
I'll pass. Any other public comment? All right. We can have, Councilmember Kat Carton?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the hearing to next Monday, the 10th.
Thank you. There's a motion to continue the hearing to next Monday. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, any other council commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstentions? The hearing is continued. I believe that completes our legislative agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
We have to open forum?
Oh, open forum. I am just like on a roll tonight. Open forum. Remember, open forum is two minutes. Please direct all your comments to Council President, and we will start with Mickey Hatfield. Don't see Mickey?
Noah Dickens from the West Hills. I'd like to say that I'm worried about this council ending up on the wrong side of history. I'm worried because this council has made laws that empower criminal drug addicts to run about our community unchecked. These laws have made our city unsafe, dirty, and caused businesses and citizens to flee. I'm worried that you have blood on your hands. Spokane is number two in fentanyl deaths in the United States. This is not a coincidence. This council does not want to jail drug addicts or force them into treatment for repeatedly breaking our laws. This council claims that their ordinances were based on data-driven best practices. These best practices are depriving the drug addict of a desperately needed timeout. A timeout that would pause the progression of their disease, a timeout that would allow their minds to clear and their bodies to heal, a timeout that would allow them to reflect on the error of their ways, a timeout that would allow them to contemplate whether or not to make a run at sobriety, a timeout that would give the law-abiding community a desperately needed break from the drug addicts. This council had the radical idea that it was better to chase around a drug addict, begging them to accept help, rather than give them a timeout. Spoiler alert, they refuse help because they cannot bear the pain of withdrawal willingly. Council, you failed the addict, you failed the non-addict, you failed Spokane. It is time for change. It is not too late for you to redefine how you'll be remembered. Immediately abandon housing first and begin implementing treatment first. Stop the enabling and quit approving harm reduction practices. Use our laws to help get addicts off our streets and into somewhere safe. And one more thing, this message was not directed at Bingler Cathcart. I know they do not support these failed policies. Hopefully, they will not be found culpable when this devastating chapter of history is written.
Good evening. My name is Will Heelings, and I live downtown Spokane. Tonight, I want to talk about something I've been speaking about for years now, my neighborhood, downtown Spokane, the heart of this city, the place that used to be alive, safe, and clean. But now, every single day, we deal with drug overdoses, assaults, businesses' windows being smashed, filth, trash, and chaos. That's the reality downtown Spokane, and the reality that a lot of you up there don't see, but I live it every single day. But now, every single day, we deal with drug overdoses and assaults. Oh, sorry. Now I'll say this, since you passed that new ordinance last Monday, the one that you all unanimous, unanimously supported, I've actually seen a little change. So I told Officer Casey Jones, and I said this last week, he's doing an op, an awesome job. They were actually out last night on a Sunday evening, walking around at about 6:00 in the evening, on foot. So maybe, maybe someone's listening, or maybe using their brains, but it's working, and I suggest that they keep doing that. That's the problem. It needs to be consistent. And something else is this enforcement of that new ordinance that you guys worked on. It needs to be enforced, not just in the daytime, but also at nighttime, because I was outside about midnight, 2:00 in the morning, and it looked pretty crazy. And there's people, and I, obviously, they had nowhere to go, but thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Sunshine Wigan. October 7th, 2024, that's last year. Justin Ball, 47 years old, died from hypothermia. My ears are bleeding right now from sleeping outside. Happens, right? When God trusts you, he doesn't just trust you with blessings. The reason Job suffered is because God trusted that he would not turn his back on him in the suffering, which teaches me. God doesn't just trust me with blessings, he also trusts me with breaking. The streets broke me unconditionally thousands of times. I screamed at God as he left me to be broken by many. And in the quiet of my mind, I was molded into strength, a whisper of hope for those that are broken. Do not ever give up on your dreams. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nolan Steiner from West Hills. I'm here to speak about the scattered shelter model. Spokane's comprehensive plan defines these shelters as service-connected sites, equitably distributed across neighborhoods. The goal is clear, prevent overburdening any one area while ensuring access and dignity for those in need. But that promise hasn't been kept. It's often a confusing maze between the roles of private developers and public agencies, often working together to achieve municipal objectives. In the past three years, West Hills has seen the Catalyst Project, the Tiny Home Village, and St. Agnes Haven, all within blocks. These examples are large shelters, not small. While they may offer vital services, they reflect a troubling pattern, concentrated citing without similar investment or engagement elsewhere, all funded with public monies. I urge the council to realign practice with policy. Future citing must reflect equity and shared responsibility. Every neighborhood... Every neighborhood deserves a role in the solution. Additionally, I've asked shelter developers to look outside of West Hills. However, that approach will not work without clear guidance from the city, who in many cases funds some of these shelter operations. Ideally, you won't just consider this testimony, you will act upon it. And then, totally change of segue here. I want to thank a few parts of the city that I've had great experiences with. Obviously, the police department, I appreciate their enforcement. Code enforcement, Louis Garcia, Nick Jeffries in the wildfire program, Ryan Benzie in the CEPA review process, Ally Brast, planning and development, the street crews for sweeping and repairs to roads, and the water department for reconnecting water hookups in my neighborhood. And then also, I do want to thank all of you for representing the city. It's a big sacrifice to serve. I'm sure you have your moments of wondering if you should have run and served, but I appreciate what you're doing. With elections tomorrow, we need to thank democracy.
Thank you, and thank you for recognizing our very valuable employees.
Derek Azaro.
Derek Azaro, supporting the kids in Spokane, as always. I looked it up. There's approximately 4,764 registered nonprofits and 501 organizations in Spokane County, Washington. Another source estimate there are approximately 3,617 nonprofit organizations in the greatest Spokane metro area, including Spokane and Spokane Valley, that file IRS Form 990, 990 EZ, and 990 PF. Who's at the top of the food chain? Catholic Charities, and Lampire, and the famous Jason Green, and we know who that is, Jill's Helping Hands. This is where the mayor's loyalty lies, in that top tier. She's the one that financed Camp Hope. She financed the Quality Inn. She financed almost everything that appeals to her needs. I don't feel that going forward, that this is a sort of city you want to have, where one organization or two dominates it and gets all the funds coming directly from the mayor's office through her support. As far as District One goes, yes, it is number one. Why is it number one? Because every time you see the meeting on Monday night, who comes in here but the people behind me who come here every single week, fighting for the people of District One and supporting our two representatives that have watched our backs over the years up against all of your negativity? I can tell you Catholic Charities built Gonzaga Haven in the old neighborhood I came from. That was done without any, as far as permits go, as a normal person has to do. No environmental reports, no traffic reports. It was basically an emergency ordinance that was done at the time. It was a property flip between the school district and the water district because they wanted a parking lot to take the place of one they lost. Jonathan Mullahan stated at the town hall meeting at the Quality Inn, with Nadine Woodward there, that they put in a 65,000-square-foot park at Gonzaga Haven.
And thank you, Derek, your time is up.
That was a lie.
Thank you.
James Gant.
James Gant, I live in District 3, North Indian Trail neighborhood. If it makes any difference, I own property in the great District One. I just wanted to give a shout out first to food banks in Spokane. My partner volunteers at a food bank three days a week. They've been overwhelmed the last two or three weeks as people anticipated the SNAP benefits going away. So one of the other ways, besides that fantastic way Larry contributed $1,000, is to consider volunteering, giving some time. There's also dozens of churches and other places that have these smaller pantries that people are filling like crazy. So shout out to people who are doing those things, too. I wasn't going to talk about this, but this is two weeks in a row that I've been here. Both weeks, somebody has called in with very disparaging names. I do not appreciate it. Tonight's was ousted, become Zach. You should not allow that. That's politicizing this meeting. It's disgusting. And it's obviously a way to disparage a candidate. It shouldn't be allowed, no matter what side of the aisle you're on. You should look at names, and they become obviously names that are made up to disparage candidates in this public forum. And as long as you're allowing political comments, I wish both Councilmember Bingel and Zepone, and this is sincere, probably the only person in the room could do this, good luck tomorrow. I hope you're both back. Thank you.
Will Quinn.
Welcome, Will.
Hey, Betsy. Will Quinn, Spokane mom-and-pop landlord. On the 20th of October, Mayor Brown stood before this body and once again hammered home the need for more affordable housing. And an hour later, I, in turn, gave the seven of you an opportunity to save two two-bedroom apartment units priced below market rate from rental roll elimination due to a zoning issue with the property. I inquired as to whether a waiver or variance could be obtained through the city planning department and asked for your assistance. This request has been met with a wall of silence until today. This morning, I received an email from the city planning department requesting that I submit an application for a zoning waiver as it applies to the Mallon property. I submitted the appropriate paperwork this afternoon. I know that to many, this will come as a complete surprise, but I have not been bestowed with a fairy godmother. It is obvious that one or more of you stepped up to make the saving of these two units from rental elimination possible. Dare I suggest another resounding collaborative effort? Both my tenants, one of whom is a single mom, and I thank you. Would anyone care to take a bow? Zach, Kitty, you're in District 3? It's 3, right? I believe the property's in District 3. If I was betting, I'd think it was you'd have something to have done with that. No? Paul, Shelby, I'm a constituent, I live in two. No, nobody there. Betsy, anything?
William, are you speaking directly to me? All comments directly to the chair. Thank you.
Michael, anything? I guess that leaves Bingel. Well, somebody stepped up, and somebody did something, and I thank you. That's it. Oh, maybe you could find some money in the 2026 budget for a Larry Andrews lazy boy.
Thank you.
William Hagie, if you're online, I'm going to unmute you. You can go ahead, William.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Perfect. William Hagie, District 2 resident, native since 1971. I'm here to speak on behalf of the West Hills Neighborhood Council and former council actions dating back to 2023. City council has failed to respond or answer the proposed resolution regarding the West Hills neighborhood from West Hills Neighborhood Council while it served as former chair before resigning. Additionally, the city council assembly board, or excuse me, the community assembly board had submitted on behalf an additional resolution on behalf of the West Hills Neighborhood Council, given the submission of the resolution to the community assembly board. The neighborhood council and community assembly board back in 2023 proposed a resolution in alignment with the city comprehensive plan, Growth Management Act, including but not limited to more torium in relation to the Sunset Laytop Bridge, the rehabilitation facing a four-year bridge closure for four years in what dates back to 2012 due to city government inaction, what has now faced and since faced lane closures, additional sidewalk closure, literally crumbling into Laytop Creek, most importantly, calling for a subarea plan for neighborhood centers and corridors. Completion of unchecked road improvement on past road closures concerning the West Canyon Drive, all of what's shown to be hindering the very life-saving evacuation route in what happened in 2023, August of 2023, the arson fire cited against the Catalyst Housing and West Hills at large. The first two of a number of arson fires cited against West Hills and the Catalyst Housing, causing over $10 million DNR air support, fire suppression, and property damage in the first two of the number of fires.
And thank you, William, your time is up.
That was all in the first four hours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Larry Andrews.
Larry Andrews, Betsy, President Wilkerson. I live in District One, and I also have great business in District One, too, for District One. I want to talk just a few minutes here because we heard one side, and I want to talk about the other side since it was allowed for a few minutes. President Trump and the Republicans have went out and would give SNAP if the Democrats would vote it in. It's not that they're not doing it, they've held back. And so there was talk that the Republicans are holding us back. Right now, it's really the Democrat vote. And so I think we get one-sided rather than the other. So I wanted to bring that up. So right now, if the Democrats would give us a repeal here, then we could have SNAP benefits just like that, okay? But we can't because they don't want to do that. They want to do other things. So I want to bring that up to you and to clarify that, okay? we in Spokane need to work together a lot better than what we have in the past. And you're all great people. Betsy, I like you a lot, okay? And but y'all are really great people. And we all need to work together better. But we need to find more of a middle ground, okay? And it's not happening yet. And we need to listen to the others so we can find that middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Aaron Miller.
Welcome.
Hi, how's it going? So a lot talked about tonight. But I would say, going back to the whole food stamp thing, I don't know a person who hasn't ever had to be on food stamps before. So I support the SNAP program. And a lot of my clients who stay at Nate's place are on that program. So it's a really great thing that we have that. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, here. I was saying that it was great, SNAP program. It's great because I think we've all had to be on that before, so. Basically, what I want to talk about is, again, the homeless thing, but more so focused on the police and how they're addressing homelessness. I think there should be a better collaboration between the police and people who are suffering from homelessness instead of making it more like criminalizing them, which I have seen police officers kind of give that approach sometimes. I get that these people have done drugs and/or have had maybe things happen to them in their past that have been questionable. But I think we have to address it with like a heart, not like being hurtful towards them. You know, like it's important that we realize that these individuals, some of them have come from a hard past. So I think just showing love like we do at my organization and bringing them in, helping them, you know, realize that they have value and getting them back and going, I think is really successful. And I think instead of like doing the J-HO thing, we should try to make something in Spokane, like a rehabilitation center or something that we can put these people into and help them get back on, you know, the right path in life. So, yeah, so that's kind of what I feel about that. Yeah, okay.
Tara Williamson.
Good evening, counsel. It's been a while since I've had to address you, since 2017's Earth Day. As your local Earth Ambassador and person who is incredibly disabled with seven conditions, who receives no disability payments as a response to this administration's activities, I took my limited resources with a wagon full of goodies going around town. And now I need to pose a couple of questions to you, counsel, if that's okay?
We do not respond to questions, but you can go ahead and ask them.
Okay, so is it still legal to be black in Spokane? And if it is still legal to be black in Spokane, why did I interact with one of the most sober, responsible, educated, unhoused people I have ever met in my life who solved nine out of 10 problems I heard on this floor tonight, who talked to me about being profiled and told not to stand on the sidewalk for being black in Spokane? I don't know what this city has become, but I lettered in every school I went to. I was in Glover Junior High's first leadership class. As our Earth Ambassador and an ex-teacher of the Community Building Preschool Center who is led by an incredibly inclusive environment, I am dismayed and disgusted at what I see our city is doing to its people. I encourage everybody to do better, and I end my time with a final ask. After this winter, which we know is going to be long and hard, we need a healing thing for our community. I beg of you to give me the pavilion on April 25 for a reduced cost for an amazing Earth Day festival for our artists, all of our people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Goldsmith.
Thank you, council president. I'll save my time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I believe that concludes our agenda this night. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all, and have a good night.